The call to order the December twelfth, or February 12th, meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. It's the Secretary to call the role, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Casali?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Lowry is absent. Mr. Oppone is absent. Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First item is approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approve of the minutes from January 8th.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. To begin this evening, we've got two items of correspondence. One from Sterling Heights, one from Rochester Hills. I'll ask the planner to give brief.
Thank you, Chairman. The city of Sterling Heights has sent a notice to our jurisdiction. They have an intent of updating their draft master plan and also creating a climate action plan. This is pursuant to Section 1.25, 3839, 2 of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. It's a requirement of these updates, and they're just providing notification at this time. Draft master plan will be provided later, at a later date for us to review and comment.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Same correspondence from both?
Same intent for the city of Sterling Heights as well.
Okay. Is your motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Is this for both, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay.
Support.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. To the substantive point of the meeting, we've got two site plans, one of us, the second being a public hearing as well. First site plan number 24-01, Janier Abrow for 50400 Rizzo Drive is the applicant or representative here. Anyone that speaks this evening is going to have to sign in with your name and address, and anyone addresses the body, your name and address.
Okay. Hi, Janier Abrow, 1887 Squirrel Valley Drive, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, for A304.
Okay.
So we're proposing to add to our building located at 50400 Rizzo Drive, Shelby Township. It's going to be a storage area. Currently, we have two, temporarily, the city let us put two containers to store some stuff. And this, you know, it was a one-year kind of agreements, and it's about to run out. So we propose to build that as a storage, so we can remove that and have everything inside.
Okay. To the planner, your report, please.
Yes, so as the applicant stated, they're looking to add to their warehouse or additional warehousing space for storage. The additions are approximately 2,178 square feet. This site and all the surrounding sites are zoned LM, that's light manufacturing. As the applicant also stated, there are two existing storage containers on the site that are approved by the township as a temporary storage solution, with the understanding that they would pursue a permanent storage solution on the site, which is why this warehouse has been necessitated. With that, too, there's also a few open violations on the site related to, of course, the outside storage and blight. The blight on the site can be addressed with proper maintenance, making sure you pick up the trash, making sure that everything is properly maintained as far as landscaping goes. As far as, you know, use of a warehouse in this property, it is zoned light manufacturing. It's entirely by right within our light manufacturing district. It's also in line with the master plan for this area, which designates it as a light industrial area of the township. With that, there's only a few comments I have for the site plan itself. The first one is that the proposed addition has an overhead door in that east elevation, which is going to be inaccessible. So unless there's some sort of justification to allow this overhead door, where it's not accessible by, you know, any sort of paved area, we'd rather have it removed rather than have it, you know, open to an empty space. With that, too, there's two paved areas on the east and south portions of the warehouse addition. They aren't really noted for anything. If they're not going to be used for anything, it'd be better to have those be landscaped, seeded, or sod.
That's fine. But can I comment, or?
Go ahead.
The overhead, is it going to be, I mean, nothing is going to be a store in front of it, just for, like, accessibility. So I mean, if it's something that we can have, I guess we can have, but that was the reason for that.
Of course. So the overhead door itself isn't any violation, it's just understanding the need for an overhead door in the rear of the property there where it's not really accessible. If your reason behind it is to maintain that property, maintain that landscaped area?
Yes.
I would say that's probably reasonable. But it should be noted, too, that that area behind the warehouse cannot be used for any sort of outdoor storage.
Definitely, yes.
And any violation will, you know, be acted on by the township.
Yeah. I mean, that's the whole purpose of this, not to have these letters in there.
Yes. With that, too, so I want to see on the site plan that's indicated there is no outdoor storage proposed, that we can enforce that in the future. Also indicate that if there is ever any potential roof bound equipment added, it'll be screened from the roadway. That's pretty straightforward. And then really, the other comment there is from the Building Department, and that's, you know, for the, the primary portion of the warehouse is used for the cultivation of marijuana. So any use of, you know, cultivation or storage of marijuana on the addition is going to have to meet those same ordinance requirements of Section 4.66. So it can't be any violations there for the use.
Okay.
That's all my comments.
Okay. So you're understand and can agree to comply with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. To the board, are there any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Abrow, during your introduction, you said that the township allowed those two containers behind your building to store some stuff.
Okay.
Now, that's a technical term. Can you explain that? What is the stuff?
Yeah, pots, dirt, miscellaneous, gloves, boxes of, you know, material that we're using in a building. I mean, just a bunch of items that we use in caregiver.
It's not anything related to leftover, leftover material from processing anything, is it?
Can I ask what's in the hazardous waste, containers that are in behind there? I apologize. Sorry.
Hold on. One more question. Nick, do we know when the township approved those two containers?
They were approved for 2023. I don't have the exact dates, but it expired the end of 2023.
Thank you very much.
So now, to the planner, the contents of those, those containers are sort of subject to building authority, or, sorry, building authority inspection, review?
Yes. So any sort of hazardous, hazardous material that would be stored inside the building will be governed by the International Building Code. You'll have to meet all the requirements there for the storage of any sort of hazardous materials or whatever may be stored in there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, is there any hazardous material stored in there?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's got to be state law that's going to, state law is going to govern what they can store and where, and they're going to enforce. Mr. Kirk, do you?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Render, render under Caesar's what is Caesar. Commissioner Baker?
Sorry, no, I was just asking, because we, we've been over to the site a couple of times. A few years back, there's contain, plastic containers in the back with hazardous wastes marked on the side, as well as open containers.
That's not ours. That's Cross Street.
It's right behind your building, where you're proposing the construction?
The hazard brown container is belonged to Cross Street. We have just a regular garbage container. So we share parking lot with our neighbor. That brown container, that hazard, that one that you were talking about, is belonged to.
So it's behind your building, though, where you're proposing the new construction?
Behind my building, there is, there is two containers that the city allow us to keep.
The storage containers, plus there's a pallet of hazardous waste containers back there as well, and some pallets of soil and fertilizer. So I'm assuming that's what will go into the building?
No. The building that we're proposing is we're only storing the dirt, the pots, something that, you know, they're utilizing at the building. But I don't have anything in that spot that you're saying.
Okay.
Okay. So the purpose for this, for the, for the, for the addition will eliminate any need for any outdoor?
Exactly, yes.
Any outdoor. You will have zero outdoor storage.
Exactly. I mean, that was the main purpose that we were trying to do.
Sure, sure, sure. Frankly, because the township won't allow you to maintain outdoor storage. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Casali?
Thank you. I guess the concern, I am thanking you for trying to clean up the site, but I'm still concerned about the perimeter, the east and south perimeter. Are you going to pave that?
Okay, so we're talking about the building.
Outside the back door that we were, that was in question, the overhead door to the east. So there's 20 feet there, like, and the purpose was?
Like I said, I don't have any problem with making it, we take the pave out of there.
And maybe we should suggest a buffer of some sort to the building to the east. And again, to answer the question, that door, why would you need a door if there's nothing? I'm just afraid that maybe it might become another storage area in that 20 feet if you have that overhead door right there. And then that's something else.
Like, we're here, I guess everything's recorded. I mean, if I do anything, if I store it, then I'm, you know, I just said something that is not true. But the whole purpose is that there is no, no storage is going to be, you know. So, I mean, that's all I can tell you guys, that there is no storage is going to be there.
Okay.
I stand behind it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
What are you going to be bringing in through the overhead door?
Did you have a question?
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, address the chair, and then I'll recognize. Okay, go ahead.
What type of stuff are you going to be bringing through the overhead door?
So it's mainly dirt.
You going to be using excavators or pickup trucks to drive it in and out of?
Actually, they come through pallets, so we just, you know, haul them through hands. There are pallets of dirt. You know, the reason being, if you leave them outside, they freeze, so it takes a while for them to be in the right condition. They have to be room temperature.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is your motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to move to postpone site plan number 24-01. Janier Abrow, 50400 Rizzo Building located at 50400 Rizzo Drive, south of 23 Mile Road East of Shaner. Proposed 2,100 square foot, 2178 square foot industrial building. Site plan is postponed to allow the applicant time to address Department Engineering and Planning Commission comments on the site plan and to identify how the open code violations will be addressed.
Motion by Turner, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. I'll call the, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, site plan, it's a, is a public hearing. Site plan, final PUD number 23-36, Damiano Di Macurio. I'll ask the Secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, McCombe County, Michigan, has received a request for final approval of the following planned unit development. Applicant, Damiano Di Macurio, 1120 North Main Street, Rochester, Michigan, 48307. Proposed use cherry blossom, 15 units. Final planned unit development. Location, 56240 Van Dyke Avenue, south of 26 Mile Road, east of Van Dyke Avenue. Final site plan number, PUD number 23-36. Sidwell number 23-07-03-151-031. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, February 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building Boardroom, 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316, 5867267243. For the purpose of holding a public hearing on the final planned unit development application. The final planned unit development application and site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department and the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006. As amended, Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on January 24th, 2024. There were 85 property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. And could you explain the uses under the present zoning and if this special land use request is appropriate?
The present zoning is R4, which is one of our lower-density, multiple zoning districts. The request is to utilize that property through this PUD, and yes, is a proper request.
Great, thank you. As the Secretary, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. The, the format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will come and state what they're requesting, the reasons for it. I'll then turn it back to the board, ask the Commissioner, ask the Commissioners if they have any questions or comments on the request. I'll then open it up to the public to come up and ask any questions or comments addressed to the board. Then I will bring the petitioner back up to answer, address any issues or questions that are raised. We are a recommending body, so ultimately, whatever decision we make on this request, we'll then go to the Township Board, who will make the final decision. With that, as I said earlier, stated earlier, anyone that addresses this body needs to state their name and address, and then sign in.
Good evening. My name is William Thompson.
So you're going to need to stand a little closer to that microphone.
My name is William Thompson. Address, 17001, 19 Mile Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. I'm here representing Mr. Di Macurio and Mr. Cockemo regarding Cherry Blossom Site Condominium. This project was in front of you here, two years ago, okay? It was presented as a six-unit, single-family residential development. During the, the engineering process, we had to eliminate one of the units. We're now looking at a 15-unit complex with detention basin. It's got its own sanitary sewer and water.
Is there some, because I can barely hear you, and you're right in front of me. So, and I can't imagine the folks in the back can't hear you. Is the, is the microphone?
I'm no closer than I was before, but we'll see what happens.
Well, that seems, that seems, I can hear you, I can hear you. So, okay.
Start from the beginning?
Yeah, please.
Okay. This project was in front of you a couple of years ago as a 16-unit, single-family development. During the engineering process, we lost one unit because of stormwater detention. We now have 15 units. They are the same size as were proposed before, 55 foot wide by, I think, 135 deep, and four, four, nine of them, and the balance are 57 feet wide. It's got stormwater detention, its own stormwater detention system, discharges into the can and drain, is serviced by public sanitary sewer, public water main, and it's got a 28-foot wide access road. Anything other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, from where this project began, as I was talking with the planner earlier, I think I unfortunately coined the term barracks. So they were like row, like, kind of row, row houses. This is a much, much better, bigger improvement and far less.
This is going to do many permutations, yes.
Yeah. So I commend the developer for, for listening to, to the public. Okay, thank you. If you want to sit down for a second. To the board for any questions or comments. Okay, I'm seeing none. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. As I had stated earlier, we are recommending body. The Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is a legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on this PUD request. At this time, anyone is welcome to come up and ask any questions or state any comments. Again, this isn't a debate. So what will happen is ask the questions, offer your comments. I'll take note of them, and then we'll, we'll bring the applicant back up to, to address them.
I'm Gwen Springer-Baskin. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Gwen Springer-Baskin, 8277 Crawford, Shelby Township, 48316. I'm right one street south of where this is to be put in. I came in last week and spoke with Julie and got some basic general information from her, and I also had an opportunity to look at the plans at that time. And I was trying to see them off my phone. It was hard to read. But anyway, I took today and I went through them really closely. And I did hear you mention the, the pond, but I'm, I'm going to go ahead and tell you what I've come up with. I, I want you, I need you to know that there is no such thing as a modified detention pond. According to the plans, there are now two modified detention ponds, which are not detention ponds at all. Neither of the ponds is engineered to have a, a drain at the bottom of the basin, which is required to be a detention pond. In reality, the plans are showing retention ponds, meaning they're now non, they are non-engineered ponds at all, and they will permanently hold groundwater as, that is drained back into the pond when the storm drains placed around the development are full. Actual detention ponds have a physical drain out through a pipe at the bottom of the basin to the can and drain, in our case, allowing control of the amount of water being held. The ponds shown on the plans are not what is needed to control groundwater of the oversaturated land that's being developed as well as the surrounding homeowners' properties. I would like to see it stipulated in the plans that they need to be actual engineered, controlled draining, detention ponds. Pretty important when you're flooding every year. I do see that there's a narration system. I don't know if that's put in yet or not, but they might help a bit, but it's not going to be enough. If these incorrect ponds are allowed, we will now be subject to even more standing water issues, other issues like the mosquito larva, erosion control along the banks of the pond, and maintaining the vegetation in the pond, amongst others. And now, another topic, I still have concerns for the traffic and bus stop placement for our children. When I spoke with Julie, she said that the bus stops are planned by the school districts. But my concern is because the road that goes into the development is also the driveway into the commercial area up front. And I know, I would not want my children to be up there waiting for a bus. It's, it's always busy there. There's always cars parked on both sides of the road when it's open, when the business is open. And I don't know what the, what the answer is to it. If the bus pulls in there, then they're going to have to do, go all the way down to the end of the, of the development and use the T. It's a background, it's a T to turn around back there. So they'd have to go all the way in and do a, I don't know how many point turn that would be. But anyway, that's an issue that I have, that I'm worried about safety for the kids and getting to their buses and back home again. I did a little bit of research on the plants that were listed to be, to be placed between the old and the new properties. All this is, seems superfluous to the building, but it's important. And all of the plants look really good except for the English yew, which when I looked it up today, said that all parts of the English yew are toxic to humans and to some animals. And I know we had one in my, in my garden when I was growing up, and I'll tell you, those little red berries look so good when you're a kid. This looks like you could eat them up. So I would like to see that one plant be replaced with something that didn't look so good to kids and be cautious and be toxic. And then, a couple more, just two more things. Why is a large retention pond shown in this, plans only screened with ARBRAV ID? There's no, there's no other vegetation around the retention pond. And the other thing I wrote is, why is there no vegetation planted between units? The, the final unit in the condo that's right up against the large retention pond, there's two ponds now. There's nothing between, nothing planted between that unit and the pond. I was just curious why there's nothing there. It's not my home, but I wouldn't want to live right up against an open, standing water pond. And then finally, I want to know if there's going to be sand and dirt or dirt hauled in to change the existing elevation of the property. We flood, our yard floods every year, and I would like to see that not happen. I know the engineer spoke to me at one of the meetings last year and told me that there were drains under the homes that were going to be draining all of the water, and we would never have a problem again. But where's it draining to? I don't know. Those are my concerns. And I did want to have the, this opportunity to, to at least express my concerns to you and not be sorry that I didn't. So if you have any questions, you can ask me. I don't, I pretty much told you what I know.
Thank you.
And thank you for seeing me the other day. I appreciate it.
Okay. If you could sign in.
Okay, thank you.
Knowing that, having gotten from the several meetings that we had on this issue that the engineering of the site was very important in the water, it's already been, has gone through our engineering, and actually, the Township's engineer is here. I'm going to ask her to come on up and, right now, let's just do it while it's, while it's fresh. Do you have your autograph? I mean, that's worth value. No, no, it's, we know, we know we find you.
Good evening.
You can introduce yourself, though.
I'm Seal Potrus with AEW Township Consultant Engineer. We reviewed the plans seven times. They started with smaller pond, and then we asked to double the size beyond the ordinance it requires. Then they end up upsizing the pond to accommodate for tributary off-site drainage. Typically, you don't detain for off-site, but their pond currently detained for the development itself, and then the tributary off-site drainage. The volume of the proposed pond on the approved plans is like 1.57 larger than the existing pond. So they went over one and a half size, what we have currently on site. It is a detention pond. It's a wet pond. You will have six and a half feet of permanent water, and on top of that, you have about five foot of storage working depth. So when we have a big rain event, the water basically gets into the pond beyond the six and a half feet to, to store in the pond and release it at a lower rate to the drain.
Okay.
And when we get to the high water level, we will overflow through the existing ditch. Actually, they're regrading the ditch along the backyards of the two homes to the drain to make it drain better to the drain. So that will be working as an overflow for the detention pond. I guess they met the township ordinance beyond the township ordinance requirements, and then they also have the Drain Office approval to discharge into the drain. So it was reviewed by the Drain Office, the detention pond, and by us.
Okay. Now, the, the standing detention, are they, are they proposing a, some kind of aeration system? Is that?
I believe so, actually.
Okay, okay. So you were satisfied that they exceeded. Now, the question about needing to bring in sand or dirt fill because of, you know, to aid in draining off the site, does it, is that, is that an issue, or? I can address that.
Yeah, I don't know if they did the earthwork. One more thing to add to, for the grading of the project, they do have perimeter swale along the perimeter of the site that's lower than the adjacent property. So whatever drain to the site, that perimeter swale is going to take it to the pond, store the water in the pond, and release it as, at lower rate up to the drain. And again, when it gets to the high water level, then the ditch will work as, to help the pipe underneath the ditch to discharge into the drain.
Okay. Are there, are there storm sewers throughout the site, or just that swale?
Yeah, so there's storm sewer on site that takes the water from the on-site to the detention pond, and there is an 18-inch pipe that's along the off-site ditch that takes it to the drain. And on top of that 18-inch storm pipe, there is also a ditch. So it's going to work in as a combination between the 18-inch and the ditch to take the water to the pond, to the drain.
Okay. And, and the opinion from, are the Township's engineers of strong confidence that there won't be any additional flooding to the site?
So detention ponds are designed for 100 years. So detention ponds are designed for 100-year storm event. If we do have anything beyond that, then that's beyond the standards what you designed for. So for example, last year, we had a 400-year event in windmill pond area, 21 in haze. That's beyond the 100-year. So at that point, the area will flood, not just the pond, like the whole backyards and, not just them. Like, will be all, all over the town.
Okay.
But they're meeting the requirements, which is 100-year.
So the township ordinance is to, is to, is to engineer to 100-year?
The detention pond, 100 years, and then the storm system for a 10-year. And they met that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Does, let me ask, does the board have any questions for A C E L? All right, thank you. Is anyone else, sir?
I'll sign in afterwards.
Sure.
Paul Backus, 8400 East Pearson Street, Shelby Township, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-six. Again, the pond is a big concern for me because they dug a big ditch through my backyard as the 100-year overflow. And right now, they haven't been maintaining the pond that's existing there. The grass this summer was probably eight feet tall. I had ordinance, I guess, somebody had drove back there and there were truck, a truck threw back there. And I contacted ordinance enforcement to see if it was them checking the property. And they said no. But then the guy was shocked that he didn't even see a pond in there because the, the grass and everything was so tall that he asked them to cut the grass. They cut the grass around the pond, but they didn't cut in the pond. The year before, they cut in the pond and not around the pond. So the maintenance of this detention pond with this final plan, how are they going to maintain this when they plant all these trees all the way around? Do they have an access point to maintain it around there? Or are they just going to let it all grow wild like it has been? And of course, then you're going to have mosquitoes and all kinds of, it gets really bad in my yard from this. The other point I wanted to make, and I'm glad to hear that they're making the detention pond larger than it currently is, is because the first year they put it in, it flooded over and flooded through my backyard. Also, the township allowed them, engineering allowed them to put the ditch in my backyard. And I have a contract with them that specifically says, "The premises so disturbed by reason of exercise of any foregoing powers shall be reasonably restored to its original condition by the grantee." Never was there supposed to be a ditch going through the backyard. It was supposed to be, and I was told that they were going to restore it. And I would never know that they were ever there. Now I get water flowing through the backyard on occasions. And, and then come to find out, the agreement, they also worded something different what the township has versus what I have that was done back in 2016. And it is certified by the bank, right? So there's a notary from the bank. I don't know what they got, but I don't know why your documentation is different than mine. That concerns me that there's some sort of forgery going on. Because my property was supposed to be restored back to the original condition. And here, they dug this big ditch that's over a foot deep. And I have trouble cutting the grass with my tractor because it's on such an angle. And then it's always wet in there. They assured me, oh, it'll be dry. It's always wet in there. And then a lot of times, I can't cut the ditch because it's wet in there from a rain event. So that's of a large concern. And back a couple of years ago, when I raised this last time, they were going to talk to the township attorney about it. I gave them copies of what I had. Nobody's ever questioned it. Nobody's ever said they've even read it. Every time I talk about it, they're like, oh, well, can you give me another copy? I'm always giving everybody a copy of it. This is the agreement I have that was notarized. The township one is different. I don't know why. So that's a big concern legally with me.
Okay.
Another question is, these are detention ponds, so why are they retaining water? I, I don't know why you would make it retain water. She's saying six feet of water. Why do you need to retain six feet of water when that doesn't count towards the amount that it's supposed to hold, the volume that it's supposed to hold? Another concern are what variances do they need? Last time, when we had a meeting, they needed something like five different variances, from the driveway to, you know, all kinds of different things, to fire department, to turnarounds, to all this. Are they needing any other variances? Why all of a sudden can, can they put the drive going next to the development in the front without a variance? Nobody's mentioned anything about any variances yet. They needed five of them the last time. So these are my concerns, and I think that this should really be addressed, especially with the drainage. I shouldn't have to have water flowing through my backyard every time it rains. And this sounds like this is what they're proposing is any overflow is going to be running through my backyard. That is not what my contract says. It was only supposed to be, you know, I don't see why they can't put another pipe in and then restore the property the way it is so that any overflow or any flooding would then go through another pipe and be flowed down. So I don't know if I need to take legal action. I don't know if I should talk to the township. According to my paperwork, the township is the one that's in, that's responsible for it.
Okay. When you're, when you're done with your comments, I'm going to call the township's attorney to, to address that issue.
Okay. Again, thank you. I guess that pretty much covers what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Just make sure you sign in, please. Mr. Kirk, do you want to address that easement issue, as we understand it?
Yeah, I reviewed the documents. There's a 2016 memorandum agreement between Mr. Backus and the developer that talks a certain language. But the actual easement was signed in 2018. 2016, Mr. Backus signed an easement to the township, which I talked to Mr. Miller. We don't need that any longer. But in 2018, he granted them an easement. The engineering group, for engineering firm looked at it. It's a valid easement. If there's some dispute as to what they didn't do or didn't do, that's a private matter that township can't get involved with.
Okay.
The only one I signed.
Sir, come on, come, why don't you come back up? Okay. All right. So, so your opinion is that there is a, there's a valid easement as the, as the petitioner has, has proposed?
That's correct. It's a recorded document. Both signatures look the same. They're both notarized. They look like they're valid, so.
Okay. That, okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment, sir?
John Moran, 56205 Belford Shelby Township. Our property is directly to the east of where this development would be. Got a few questions here. First question is that when, when they start building, is it 35 feet from our property line for them to start building? Second, second point is, if interest rates remain high and if the condos aren't selling, can they be changed the rentals without board approval? I definitely do not want rental units there. Looking at the print, it looked like our house would be at the end of a cul-de-sac for turnarounds and emergency vehicles. Could a privacy fence or a berm be built over the length of our property to reduce headlight glare and noise? Flooding, as mentioned earlier, we are in a high water table. And currently, we have flooding on our property line. Will the expanded retention pond help to alleviate the flooding due to heavy rain and snowmelt? Last year at the meetings, the representatives said it was a septic issue, which, which is not the case. Trees, will all the trees on the property be cut down? If building on Saturday or Sunday is approved, could it be restricted to start like after 9:00 a.m. on these days? And from start to finish, how long will it take to complete the project?
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'd sign in. Anyone else wish to comment? Okay, sir.
How's everybody doing? William Spitz, 8300 East Pearson. First of all, I'm going to start with the board. You mentioned that they've come a long way from what they had originally, okay? I disagree. They originally had 16 homes, and now they're down to 15 only because of the retention pond becoming larger, needing to be larger. Is that the only reason? So you said that they listen to the board, they listen to the residents. Well, I say they didn't listen to me, for one. I asked why they have a 55-foot lot width on your homes when the majority of the residents, both north and south, and majority in the area, are 80 to 90 feet wide? If you were to do 80-foot widths, you would be able to put 10 units in, which would be a little better. 70-foot would give you 12 units. So you still have 15 units at this location. Paul here, my neighbor, mentioned the flooding. I'm going to have to disagree with this township engineer consultant with their saying that it's, it's acceptable by the township, what they have, when we're already wet already. It's flooded all the time. It's always wet. You're going to put 15 homes in here and saturate the ground even more, okay? I understand 15 because you're getting the max you can out of it. And you're trying to appease us by this retention pond, which I am very impressed that they've enlarged it. But is it going to work? My issue is, I need, I need confirmation. I, I don't know where to find it to be for sure. But from what I'm seeing, everything they've done so far in our township, we have nothing but water problems, all right? Is this big enough of a pond? And do you really need a 55-foot lots? I'm not understanding that. Why can't you, you know, comply to the rest of the neighborhoods, which have 80 to 90-foot wide lots? Which, which again, would get you down to 10 units. That's my opinion, and that's what I'd like to see done. Not only that, it would also help for the flooding issues. All right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else wish to comment? All right, thank you. To the planner for her comments?
Thank you, Chairman. So this property was a conditional rezoning in site plan back in, let's see here, late October 25th, 2021. This was approved as a conditional rezoning in a site plan, conditional rezoning from R1B to R4. And then the site plan with the 16-unit development. So between the time that it was preliminary, preliminarily approved, this board and the township board looked at the plans and said that this is feasible and they can proceed with, with what they're proposing. So that is why they're coming back with the 55-foot lots because this property is zoned R4 with the conditional site plan, what they prepared at that time. So with that being said, that is why they're 55-foot lots because they deemed it was acceptable at that time. So they went through the engineering process, obtained their permits from soil erosion and also drain commission engineering, and that's why we're here. Typically, what happens is during the final portion of this review, it's just a procedural thing. We've already discussed all the setbacks. We've already pretty much discussed the landscaping and the treatment. I know the drainage was a big issue. But pretty much, we, we've already discussed all the setbacks and lot sizes and so on and so forth. So I believe at that time as well, it was discussed that if the site did not accommodate 16 units, then they would have to lose, lose a unit, which in fact, they did, as we know. The site meets all the 50-foot perimeter setbacks to the north, east, and south. As far as the landscaping that Mr. Moran brought up, they have extensive landscaping along that T in the road and the entire east portion of the site. So it would be, you know, up to the planning commission. If they wanted, they would recommend something more, maybe a fence along that T, T area. But I believe that landscaping that they're proposing is sufficient to block any headlights from the vehicles traveling east. The roadway is 28 feet wide. They're going to have to provide no parking signs on one side of the road. And I believe right now, the fire hydrants are on the north side of the, the street. And that's where the no parking signs will have to go. However, the access road narrows as it gets close to Van Dyke. And I believe it is 20 feet wide. So you will not be able to park on either side of the road as it gets past that curve along, you know, right where the commercial is and a little bit further north. You will not be able to park on either side of the road. As far as the buses, just wanted to make a comment on that. That is the school district that, that regulates where the bus would go or how they would pick up the children in the area. But this afternoon, I was driving up Van Dyke during the, the hours, and I stopped behind three buses that stopped right at the end of the street along Van Dyke. So I don't know if this might be the case in this, in this situation as well. They would probably not be able to make it down the street. But it's not uncommon to have the bus stop on Van Dyke because I did it three times today as well. As far as, you know, the master plan, again, is PUD allows modifications of the setback size, you know, for this. They do not require variances. So this, the PUD process allows the board to modify these, the setbacks and so on and so forth for, for this type of development. The only thing that I also wanted to mention as part of my site plan review comments, a bond will need to be posted for the paving, landscaping, and recreation area improved, improvements as estimated by the township engineer. Master deed and bylaws will also be required as part of this submission. Minor corrections to the plans as far as the side yard setbacks differ from the dimension noted on the site plan versus the application and indicate the minimum side yard setback and 18 feet, just to note, is provided. 18 feet between units is provided in this development. Also indicate the location of the egress windows. If they're proposed on the side of the homes, ensure that there will be five feet from the outer edge of the egress window to the property boundary. The other issue is the six-foot wrought iron fence that is proposed. It doesn't seem that it's spiked, but we do not allow spiked fences. So that'll have to be modified so there are no spiked fences. And then also per section 4.15 of the zoning ordinance, site condominium developments are permitted, subject to no accessory buildings and no perimeter fences in this. So that will have to be a note on the plan as well.
Okay, thank you. The representative, I think most of the questions, at least, were, I believe, answered. I think one, the maintenance, you know, of these ponds in terms of, you know, cutting the grass around and near, I mean, is there an access point beyond the, you know, the gentleman creates that you're going to plant trees around them? Will you be able to get into the pond to?
There's a gate at the end of the sub-street.
Okay.
At the T, at the T turnaround, there's a gate there for access.
To, okay.
Yes.
All right. And will somehow, in whatever, whatever HOA documents, will there be some requirement that the maintenance of, of that pond, those ponds be done?
Correct.
All right. So either by the, the association, once it's turned over from the developer, the developer will maintain it? Okay.
And there is a stormwater maintenance agreement with the township that has been signed and approved.
Okay. English yews, I remember as a kid in Detroit, we used to have them, but is?
We can switch those out.
We can put those out, okay. That's easy. Yeah, in terms of ARBRAVIDI screening, seems just an appropriate thing to do it. I don't, you know, I don't know what else you would put that would be better. I hope that woman created the issue, but they asked a question, so I just thought I would. You have any thoughts on ARBRAVIDI's screening the?
ARBRAVIDI's, it's the best winged use. I don't know. It's, it's, they're, they're dense, you can panicles together, they're vertical. They provide a good screening.
It's not a long time. Okay. I mean, I, it makes sense, to me at least. Building on Saturdays and Sundays? I mean, are the, we have ordinances, do we, what, what's the ordinance say?
So Monday through Saturday, no construction on Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. If they would like to work outside of those hours, they would have to seek board approval. Township board approval.
Got it, okay. How long to complete the, the project?
Depends on how, on how long, how fast, how's it sell. I believe they want to start construction this year. Then the construction would happen this summer. Like, it's, it's, it's 15 units, two years, maybe, maybe longer.
Okay. Trees removed on site, I think, or can?
The, the trees have to go.
Okay.
They just, they just, you can't work around them.
And there was a question on whether they could use it? Then there was a question on whether they could use it rentals. I don't think we restrict anybody that we can, we just can't restrict whether a property is, you know, someone buys the property, whether they rent it or not. The same thing would happen in anyone's neighborhood, correct?
That's correct.
All right. All right. I think those are the, the questions, as I saw them, the rest. As they regard to the retention ponds and their ability to move the waters out, I'm gonna trust that, that the township's engineer, who are degreed and certified, you know, and, and have, have expressed that they have gone beyond the standards, pardon?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just want to clarify, when I'm saying there is a perimeter swell around the site, if they have low spots in their backyards, that's not gonna solve the issue. We're starting from the property line of the development to their site. We're basically draining down to their site. But if, beyond the property line, if they have low spots, that's not gonna drain it to the site because that, that means they need to go on their property to bring it to their property. So that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, you can't re-engineer something that was built 50 years ago.
Exactly. I just wanna make sure that they understand that.
Yeah, right. We're just talking, we can only address what's being proposed to us. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you.
They let me point one thing out.
Sure.
Our storm sewer system was enlarged to have the capacity to carry 100-year storm. To handle all the drainage that's coming. Typically, you do a 10-year storm. A 100-year storm is about 60% more intense, more water. We designed it to pick all that stuff up. All our cash basins, all the grays at the property line are lower than the adjacent houses. I mean, we can't regrade their backyards, but we're providing them a way to get their water out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, our base, our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. This evening, we may recommend approval. We could disapprove the request, or we could table it to evaluation, evaluate the information further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Kusuri Kassali.
Yep. I move to recommend approval to the township board for a site plan and final plan unit development application number 23-36 Damiano di Mercurio, De Lusa Building, Geicon LLC, 56240 Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number 23-07-03-151-031, located south of 26 Mile Road, east of Van Dyke Avenue, based on the applicant submitting revised plans addressing the planning commission, department site plan, and engineer's comments. The basis for the motion. Number one, the plan unit development is consistent with a preliminary plan approved in 2022 as part of the conditional rezoning application number 01-20. Number two, the design provides appropriate land use relationships with the project and to existing development in the vicinity. Number three, the proposed development will not adversely impact any surrounding development. Number four, the proposed deviations from existing zoning ordinance standards are modest in scope and may be allowed as part of the PUD approval process.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Kassali, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Kassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
No.
Mr. Long?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the recommendation to the board will be, is in the affirmative. Next item is planning director's report. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Section 19 of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act also requires the planning commission to make an annual report to the legislative body concerning its operations and the status of planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions by the legislative body relating to planning and development. The annual report identifies the amount of development that has occurred in the community during the past year and accomplishments. During the past year, the Planning and Zoning Department processed 323 total applications. This represents a decrease from 387 applications processed in 2022. The decrease in applications was largely attributed to signage and followed by site plans, tree permits, and zoning board of appeals applications. The notable task for our department this year was upgrades to the administrative processes such as online applications and payments. We also obtained grant funding for EV charging study for the township municipal properties and from the Michigan Public Service Commission, and we also completed the Ryan Road traffic study that we approved last year, middle of last year.
Anyone have any questions for the planner or about the, the report?
Excellent work.
Yes. And congratulations to our planner for being foisted Moore responsibility under her broadening shoulders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So move.
Your support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. One more.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.